Oh my goodness, my gavel's broken.
Luke broke it last time.
I would like the record to show that Vice Mayor Eldridge broke my gavel last time when I was not here. No, I'm just kidding. So I will call the Cookville City Council meeting for Thursday, June 6th to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Baji, here. Councilman Walker?
Here.
Mayor Wheat?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge?
Here.
Councilman Gilbert?
Here.
Bye, Chris.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Chris McMichael of Ingraham Word Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, I thank you in the name of Jesus for our city. I thank you for our council members and the leadership of this city. We pray, Lord, for your wisdom. May they have the wisdom of God to steer and lead and direct this city for your glory and for the citizens betterment. We ask you, Father, to keep our city safe. We thank you, Father, for all that you're doing for our community in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one with its vision, by our God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Chris. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
Just one change, change the wording of seven S to say, consider awarding bid and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract for the gateway monument sign project. So what was added was executing contract.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the agenda as amended?
The motion.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the council? And we'll vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on May 16th, 2024. Is there a motion? Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the council? Okay, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Five B, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance O-240512, amending the budgets of the general fund, state street aid fund, solid waste fund, animal control fund, and the quality of life fund for the city of Cookville, Tennessee for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. Ms. Emel.
Council members, this ordinance amends the budget for five of our funds for the current fiscal year. There are no changes in the ordinance since our first reading, and we've received no comments on it. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, but respectfully request your approval of it on second reading.
Thank you. Is there, oh, yeah, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. We will open the public hearing portion of this meeting for this agenda item. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on five B? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Five C, consider on second final reading ordinance O-240513, amending Title 18, chapters one and two of the Cookville Municipal Code relative to water and sewer rates. Mr. Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this is unchanged from the first reading, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Motion made by Councilman Gilbert, seconded by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Consent agenda six A, set a date six, 2024, for a public hearing on the storm water management program in ordinance O-240618, amending Title 14, chapters five, seven, and eight of the Cookville Municipal Code pertaining to erosion control, storm water management, repairing, I hope I said the right buffer zones. And six B, consider purchasing Cina Smart Point meters for the advanced meters infrastructure project. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public on this? Discussion from council? Okay, go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-240615, providing a tax rate for the city of Cookville, Tennessee for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2025, providing means for the collection of revenues and establishing the due dates and delinquency dates for property taxes. Ms. Emel.
Council members, this ordinance will establish a tax rate for the 2024 property taxes, providing revenue for our fiscal year 25 budget. While we're recommending no change in the current tax rate of 92 cents, the budget we are presenting for your approval this evening includes a change in the distribution of that 92 cents. We're allocating five cents of the tax rate to the state street aid fund to start an additional revenue stream to help with paving and street maintenance costs. We're reducing the allocation to the general fund by that same five cents, but as you'll see later on in the appropriation ordinance that's coming up, we are moving another revenue stream from the debt service fund back to the general fund. So net-net, it more than offsets the reduction in the property tax. So the 92 cents property tax rate is projected to provide revenue of approximately $11,640,000. The allocation in the ordinance is 62 cents to the general fund, 12 and a half cents to transportation infrastructure fund, two cents to the geo debt service, five and a half cents to solid waste fund, five cents to state street aid, four cents to economic development, and one cent to the quality of life. This slide shows you the growth in our penny rate. The penny rate in 2014 was about $73,000, and in 2023 was about $118,000. That's growth of 61% in 10 years. The estimate that we're using in preparing the budget for fiscal year 25 is 120,260. Again, the ordinance sets the tax rate, establishes due date, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. We will open the public hearing portion for this agenda item. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion from council?
Yeah, I'd like to highlight the fact just our commitment to street improvements and the allocation made there. And I think it's evident through town what's going on, but this is council's commitment to that and the additional funds that we're committing.
And all without a tax increase.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we're very fortunate as a city to be able to do that, allocate money this way and our roads, wallpaper, and short-term improvements. I think that's very important. We've all made great strides in the last six years that I've been on the council, and it's just, it's really impressive to be able to not raise taxes and still do all the improvements that we've done.
Good job. Anything else? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-240616, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025. Ms. Emel.
Council members, this ordinance appropriates $926,450 to various public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for fiscal year 25. $911,200 is budgeted in the general fund, $15,250 in the utilities. $766,450 is for our governmental partners' joint ventures, and 70% of that is going to two organizations. The Putnam County Library is the largest with $407,000. We partner with the county on that. And the Chamber of Commerce at $130,000. $160,000 was given to our nonprofit committee, and they made the allocations for that. And the rest of the slide is basically the detail of the ordinance. I'm not going to read them all. They've not changed since we had the work session. They've been displayed on our website and posted in the newspapers. I would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Baji. This is a public hearing as well, so we will open up for any discussion on this item. No one to speak on it. We will close. Any discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-240617, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025 for the city of Cookville, Tennessee. Ms. Emel.
Council members, this is the big ordinance. This ordinance provides for the adoption of our fiscal year 25 budget for 17 funds. We had our budget work session about a month ago when we went through it in great detail. This first slide highlights that we, the changes that we've made in the budget since we've had that work session. In state street aid, I've added an additional expenditure appropriation of $65,000 for a melting kettle with a trailer. Quality of life fund, I've added $150,000 additional appropriation and expenditures for Can Creek Park construction design plans. And in the bond fund, I've added an additional appropriation of $2 million in expenditures for Can Creek Park project construction. And then in the water quality control fund, I've added $130,000 in additional interest revenue, and we moved a truck that we weren't able to get by June 30th of this year into next fiscal year. So that's pretty much the changes that we've made in the budget. But to start off with, I want to talk a bit about personnel citywide. The city has 473 full-time employees. 301 of those are in the general fund. And since 2000, we have put a great deal of effort in trying to improve our employees' pay. So this year, we did not want to fall behind, so what we're doing is we're proposing a pay scale adjustment of 2%. We have two pay scales, one for general employees and one for firefighters that work 24-hour shifts. This budget, we're proposing a market adjustment of 50 cents an hour. That's $1,040 annually for general employees. And for firefighters, that's $1,459.20. And that's for all full-time employees, all grades not to exceed the maximum in grade. And that market adjustment will be paid in July. And then also in the budget, we're proposing merit increases based on the employee's annual evaluation, performance evaluation of up to 4% for certified police officers and firefighters, and up to 2% for all other employees. So just those two pay adjustments, the market adjustment and the merit increase, is going to cost about $1.2 million citywide, and that's just in pay costs. It doesn't include benefits. And the increase in pay in the general fund's about $873,000. So I also wanted to point out, citywide, our TCRS rate, you know, we changed to the hybrid plan for anybody hired after July 1st, 2019, but we still have about 283 employees covered under the legacy plan. And that rate is set by the state, calculated by an actuary, and our rate went up about 2.5% from 12.22% to 14.72%. And that's a significant cost. It costs the city about, about a half a million dollars more annually to absorb that 2%. So also in this budget, we're proposing nine new personnel, nine new positions. Eight of those are full-time. One is part-time. In the police department, we are funding two new certified police officer positions. That brings the total certified officers to 77. One support staff is a digital forensic investigator in police department. And in the general department, we're looking for a part-time deputy court clerk, and we're funding a full-time payroll specialist. In public works, we're funding a superintendent position. That was a position we had about a decade ago that hadn't been funded. We're funding that in the new budget year. And in building, two building maintenance worker positions in the maintenance department. And then in the solid waste fund sanitation, we're funding one support service technician. So we're going to jump into the general fund budget. In revenues, this ordinance budgets total available funds, revenues, and transfers in of $38.8 million, which is about 4% increase over this year's budget. And 88% of those funds come from local taxes. You can see the number on the top is about $34 million. And that local taxes includes property tax, sales tax, in lieu of tax, business tax. While we reduced the property tax that's going into the general fund, we have transferred the payment in lieu of tax from the hospital into this fund, so that's in that line, too. So this pie chart shows you, gives you a look at those budgeted revenues and transfers in by source. You can see the biggest piece of the pie is local sales tax. We're extremely dependent on sales tax. And it's 52% of this year's budget, which is consistent with prior year's budget. The only other change in here is property tax is down about 2%, but the in lieu of tax payment is up 2%, and that's where we've shifted that money around. And since sales tax is the largest source of revenue for the general fund, kind of wanted to show you this slide of what we're proposing for it. That's a historical, actual summary of sales tax in a chart there. We're projected to end this year with about $19,684,000 in sales tax, and we're budgeting a 2% growth on top of that for next year. So we've budgeted $20,77,000 for next year. And then on the expenditure side, this ordinance appropriates operating expenditures of $37.7 million, which is a 7.6% increase over this year's budget, and then capital expenditures of $5,134,000. This, this pie chart shows you those operating expenditures by type. We're a service industry, so salaries and benefits are our largest expenditure, and that's 77% of our operating expense. And then this chart shows you those operating expenses by department. Police and fire are public safety departments, are our largest departments, and combined, they represent 53% of our operating budget. So the police department, this budget funds $12,283,680 in operating expenditures for them. That's an increase of 5.8% and $400,000 in capital. Their capital includes seven patrol vehicles with the equipment and the installs. And again, I already mentioned, this budget funds three new personnel positions in their department. And also in operating, their body camera contract expires next year, so we've got additional funds in there for renewal of that contract. Fire department, the ordinance appropriates $7,501,806 in operating expense, an increase of 4.35%. In capital, we're budgeting $2.2 million, which is to cover the ladder truck that's already been approved. Order, I think they've started to build it, so hopefully we'll get that in the next 12 to 18 months. Public Works Department, their operating budget is $5,157,900, an increase of almost 7%. Funded, one new position, a superintendent position I've already mentioned. And their capital is $1,520,000, which includes building and improvements at the location of Blowze and Stevens. We have a recycling center there. They want to do some work there. A pickup truck, the storm water project here at Spring Street that they're going to be working on, two dump trucks, and another pickup truck that has a utility bed. The Leisure Services Department, their operating budget is $2,790,000, an increase of 10% over this year's budget. Capital budget for them is $892,000. They have an LPRF grant that they're going to be doing work at Can Creek Park. That's $825,000. A vehicle for their administrative offices, $42,000. And then additional renovations at the bottom floor at the leisure services offices for a bathroom and another dressing room. And then our Parks and Maintenance Department, we're budgeting operating expenditures of $2,137,000. That's an increase of almost 8% over current year's budget. This department will get two new positions, two new building maintenance workers. And then included in operating is $20,000 for a polimerium structure at the cemetery. And then capital of $80,000 includes two mowers that we try to replace mowers every year for Can Creek Park and the cemetery, a utility vehicle, concrete repair work at the Dogwood Park concession stand, and then building repairs at the senior center to include or try to update the bathrooms. The Community Development Department has an operating budget of $1,545,000, an increase of almost 3% over current year. And capital there, we, we are funding one vehicle to be purchased in the new budget year. The General Department has an operating budget of $5,396,000, an increase of almost 20%. Funding two positions there, one part-time and one full-time in the payroll department. The operating expenditures include some extra funds for repairs and maintenance to complete work here at City Hall. Look at added security measures, professional services to do phase two of the ERP study, consulting project, and some software licensing fees. And then we also have money in there for opioid funds. If we get that in, then we can immediately transfer that to the hospital based on our MOU that we have with them. Transfers to other funds, we're transferring in this budget $113,500 to the animal control fund, the tree board, $5,000 to state street aid. We're doing another million dollars that we're budgeting in paving there. And then $61,000, that's the sports betting money that has come in. We're transferring that to state street aid to be used towards sidewalk construction. And then 200, we're budgeting $250,000, moving from the general fund to the bond fund, and that's to be used for the fire station FFNE when we construct those fire stations. Instead of borrowing money for that FFNE, the furniture fixtures and equipment, we're going to cash flow that with reserves from the general fund. So that slide just gives you a summary of all the capital that's included in this budget by department. Again, the fire department, $2.2 million, police department, $400,000 for vehicles, public works, a few items there for $1.5 million. Vehicle for community development, leisure services, $892,000, and Parks and Maintenance, $80,000. And then less the grant, the LPRF grant proceeds will help offset some of the costs there. The net cost, capital cost to fund balance is four point, about $4.6 million. So to summarize the general fund, the ordinance that you have tonight is appropriating revenue and transfers in of $38,805,608, and then appropriates operating expenditures, capital expenditures, and transfers out of $44,280,000. So this budget actually has a deficit of planned use of fund balance of $5,474,000, and we're projecting to finish fiscal year 25 with a fund balance of a little over $34 million. So we're going to move into state street aid unless you have questions on the general fund. So state street aid, the ordinance budgets revenue of $3,241,000, and that includes five cents of the property tax, and then the state, mostly the state gasoline tax. Expenditures, transfers in from general fund already mentioned of $1,61,000, and then expenditures of $3,957,000. So we're projected to end fiscal year 25 with $2.6 million in fund balance. The expenditures, you can see the resurfacing and paving, we're budgeting $1,800,000 to pave streets again. We've increased the budget in sidewalk improvements from $50,000 to $111,000 to try to do more sidewalk construction and sidewalk improvements. And then we got salt purchases of $60,000, intersection improvements of $162,000, and then capital expenditures of $1,766,000. That includes traffic signal controllers and monitors of $48,000, traffic counters. The metal, melting kettle that I'd mentioned is the change from our work session is there. And then grant projects of $1,628,000. And those grant projects are the Spring Street sidewalk construction phase twos getting ready to kick off here. So we've got that budgeted and some other grant projects. Transportation fund, we're budgeting revenue of $1,640,000, and this fund receives 12 and a half cents of the property tax. Expenditures of 900, about $960,000, projecting to end next year with a fund balance of $4.4 million. And the proposed budget for expenditures there include $60,000 for Salem Church Road and England Drive, and $505,000 for Wall Street widening for Mississippi and North Washington, and then Henley Drive extension to Bunker Hill Road, $295,000. The Cedar Avenue Streetscape project is going to be completed this year. And then we've got $80,000 in there for a traffic signal project. It's that Myo Vision camera project. And then we've got $19,500 budgeted for a feasibility study of looking at extending Foreman Drive. So we've got money left in the last two bond issues that we've done, and this kind of summarizes the last two bond issues we did. Left from the 2021B issue is about $2.2 million. Left from the 2022 issue is about $5.8 million. So as we move into the general improvement bond fund, beginning fund balance is $8.5 million. That's pretty much the bond proceeds that are available. We are budgeting, assuming that we're going to do two additional bond issues next fiscal year, to the tune of $20 million. And then you can see the transfer in there of $250,000, I already mentioned, from the general fund for the fire department FFNE. And then we're budgeting expenditures of $28,114,000. And that includes $9,320,000 for the fire station rebuild remodels, $3.7 million for the renovations that we're going to do at CPAC Leisure Services and that Dogwood Park entrance. Another change that I had mentioned earlier since our work session is we're budgeting $2 million for the Can Creek project. And then our street improvement projects are $4.4 million for West Stevens, $7,774,000 for Phase Two of 10th Street. And we're also budgeting Phase Three of 10th Street, $600,000 to start doing the design of that phase of it. So to kind of summarize what we've got going and what projects we're looking at, the project list on the left is what we currently have underway or hope to start soon. That's 10th Street Phase Two, and this is total cost here, estimated total cost. $8,570,000, West Stevens Street Phase One, $7,620,000. And then we've got the $600,000 to do design for 10th Street Phase Three. And then CPAC Dogwood Park renovations, $3.7 million. The fire station rebuilds, $12,320,000. Can Creek Park project, $2 million. And then bond issue costs. So we're looking at project costs that we're committed to of about $35 million. You subtract the bond proceeds, I said, we have on hand, and the transfer from the general fund, we're going to need to do additional debt of about $27 million to complete everything that we have on our list. And then on the right is projects that we've identified for future fiscal years, and you can see there's some big dollar ones there, too, so. So can we afford to borrow all that money is the next question. And so that takes us into the debt service fund. And the debt service fund is starting the year with $19,413,000. That's a very healthy fund balance for our debt service fund. Where the ordinance appropriates revenue of two cents on the property tax, $247,000. revenue of two cents on the property tax, 247,000. The state shared sales tax we put in this fund, and that's budgeted at 4,320,000, and then other revenue, 414,000. And then the expenditures are basically our principal and interest on the bonds and other miscellaneous cost of almost 5 million dollars. And I have budgeted principal and interest on 10 million dollars worth of bonds. If we do bonds later in the spring, we won't have PNI payments on those until the next fiscal year. So that gives you an idea of what we're looking at in our bond fund. We currently have five bond issues outstanding, and there's, there they total, the debt outstanding at June 30th is 28,140,000. We issued no debt during the current fiscal year. And this shows you the debt service on those current issues outstanding. If we didn't borrow any more money, we'd have them all paid off by 2037. You can see the 2013 pays off there in 2029, and then you go from there. So, but you can see the principal and interest payments on those. The top there is a little over 3.5 million. And as I'd said, we're putting about 5 million dollars in revenue in there. That's even with us moving the payment in lieu of, for the hospital out of there, back into the general fund. So. Now this slide looks kind of messy, but what that is, is the blue columns on the bottom are the current debt outstanding. And then this is what if we borrow that 30 million dollars, we do two, three 10 million dollar issues over the next 18 months, two of them next fiscal year, and that shows you the principal and interest payments there. And the red line is the projected revenue for that fund, and it's around the 5 million dollar line. So you can see, we're planning, if we do this, this way with the revenue that we're putting in there, we're planning to use some of that fund balance and bring some of that 19 million dollar fund balance down. So for about 10 years, we will reduce reserves. The principal and interest payments will exceed the revenue going in there. But as you can see here, that takes our fund balance down. That first long blue line is current fund balance of about 19 and a half million dollars, and it takes it down to its low point at 2035, and it's just under 6 million dollars. And it still exceeds the annual debt service payment. So you want your fund balance to exceed your annual debt service payment. So having said all that and shown you all that, the conclusion is, we need to borrow about 30 million dollars for the projects we have on our plate right now, and we do have the deck capacity to do so. Okay, moving on to solid waste fund. We have seen a lot of increased costs in providing this service to our citizens, and with the continued growth of the city, we're going to have to be adding more collection routes in the next fiscal year. And in order to maintain service, we need to purchase trucks on a regular basis. They, they get a lot of wear and tear on them. And truck costs, sanitation trucks have gone up substantially, as you know. So this budget we're presenting to you for fiscal year 25 includes a commercial rate increase of 12%. That still keeps our rates well below private hauler rates, and it's expected to generate about 18,000 a month. The last time we did a rate increase for solid waste was in fiscal year 17, and that was a 10% increase. So also in this fund, we are allocating a portion of the property tax to this fund. We started doing that in 2017. The current allocation is five and a half cents. We did increase that two cents this fiscal year 24, and that provides about 661,000 in revenue. We currently run three residential routes and four commercial front load routes. And as I mentioned, with the growth, they're projecting in fiscal year 26, maybe late 25, they're going to have to be adding additional routes. So the fiscal year 25 budget I'm going to show you does have a proposed deficit of 280,500, but we're also proposing purchasing two trucks next year. We budgeted two trucks this year, and we're only able to get one of them. So we're going to go ahead and get two of them next year. And then going forward, we hope to get them on a cycle where we're purchasing one truck every year. So the solid waste fund is going to start the, the year with a fund balance of 1.7 million dollars, revenue of 2,863,000. That includes property tax, charges for services, and I am budgeting, we're proposing doing the rate increase effective October. So I, we are budgeting about nine months of that rate increase in those revenues for charges for services. And we're budgeting expenditures of 3,143,000, thus reducing fund balance next year down to 1,436,000. Operating expenditures, total of 2,132,000. That's a 6% increase over current year's budget. And this fund is getting one new personnel. A support person is going to be added to this fund. That brings our full-time employees to 17. And their capital expenditures include dumpsters and carts, and then the two trucks, a front load and a side load truck. And as a matter of fact, council's already approved those. There's such a lag time in getting those, we've approved those already and locked in the prices. So we're just waiting for delivery later this fall. So. The economic development fund, budgeting revenues there of 550,000. This fund gets four cents of the property tax, expenditures and transfers out of about 900,000 there. And we're projecting to end next fiscal year with a fund balance of a little over 3 million dollars. We're budgeting 500,000 contingency for land, 200,000 for construction of a downtown parking lot, 50,000 for Stewart Cemetery Road, and then the transfers to the general fund, 75,000 help offset the contribution to the Chamber of Commerce for the restricted contributions they get, and then 15,000 to offset the contribution to the biz boundary. The quality of life fund, we're budgeting revenues of a little, about a million, 40,000 there. This fund gets one cent of the property tax, and we also put the hotel motel tax in there, and we're budgeting about 850,000 for that. We're budgeting expenditures and transfers out of 2,180,000. Most of the expenditures there are the hotel motel tax projects, and this is one item too that I had mentioned that we've changed since our work session. We've increased the hotel motel tax projects. And you can see there, we've added the Kane Creek, 150,000 for design construction plans on what additional work we want to do at Kane Creek Park. We have that conceptual drawing of things that could be added to the pickleball courts. We just got to, you know, decide how we want to move forward with that and get those plans ordered. So, so the hotel motel tax, we're projecting to carry into next year about 1.7 million dollars. We're budgeting revenue of about 850,000 for next year. And spending that money, we make a contribution to the chamber for the visitors' bureau of 25,000. We've committed 500,000 to TCU for the stadium project. We've got a million dollars budgeted for pickleball courts at Kane Creek. That's our number one priority. And then the design plans for additional amenities at Kane Creek of 150,000. And then the gateway signs, which I think you're approving later this evening, in collaboration with TCU, we've got 400,000 budgeted there. So. The drug fund, we're budgeting revenues of 36,000 and expenditures of 137,000, projecting to end next year with a fund balance of a little over 100, little less than 100,000. We're budgeting 20,000 for drug enforcement and about 105,000 in equipment. We're getting three vehicles for CID for 90,000, and they want to purchase an additional drone for 15,000. The animal control fund is projected to start the year with about 1.7 million dollars in fund balance. We're budgeting revenue of 644,000 and expenditures of 705,000. This fund is supported by our local governmental partners. So the city will be contributing 113,500, and we've asked the county to do the same of 113,500. That's a slight increase over what we've given this year. And then we're requesting from Monterey and Allgood, 10,400, and from Baxter, 7,500. And she comes up with those numbers based on where the animals come from. They track that pretty closely down there. So in terms of expenditures included in operating, we are budgeting 50,000 to do a feasibility study of maybe doing an onsite clinic for span neuter and other types of medical care for the animals. The tree board fund, we are budgeting 7,600 in revenues and transfers in. We transfer 5,000 from the general fund to this fund, and expenditures of 9,800, operating expenditures of 4,800 and grant. They typically get one grant a year, about 5,000 that they can use to plant trees and share them with the community. So that's that fund. Moving on to the internal service funds, the health insurance fund, we've got about 3 million dollars left from where we were self-insured, moving into fully insured. So we're going to use that money to cash flow this fund going forward. The revenues going into there will be the premiums from our employees, the city and the retirees, and then the expenditures of 7,803,000 are the premiums paid to Blue Cross Blue Shield for being fully insured. There's no change in our medical, dental, and vision premiums for fiscal year 25. That was good news for our employees. And we have a Met Advantage plan for retirees. It's on the calendar year. It did not, the premiums did not change this past January, but we do not know yet what those will be next January. So we're projected to end next year with a fund balance of 2,932,000 of that fund. So. Another internal service fund is the workers' comp general liability fund. We use this fund to pay our insurance company for those claims, and then the departments reimburse this fund for whether or not they were workers' comp or claims related to their departments. So it has about a million dollars in it to start the fiscal year. Revenues, which will be reimbursements from the departments of 680,000, and expenditures, mostly claims for workers' comp liability of 650,200. So we're projected to end next year with a fund balance of 1,072,000. And my last internal service fund is our customer service department. Whatever money this department expends for operations or capital is charged back to the utility departments. So the expenditures we're budgeting there include meter reading expense and customer service expense of 1,796,000, and the revenue is going to be the reimbursements that come back from the utility departments. And then we're going to move on to our utility departments, our energy department, the electric division. Their budget, they're starting next year with cash reserves, or projected to start next year with cash reserves of about 17.8 million dollars. They're budgeting revenue of 61,363,000 and expenses of 65,821,500. When you add back your non-cash depreciation and amortization, they, they're expected to reduce cash reserves next year by 1,381,000, leaving them with six, about 16 and a half million dollars at the end of next year. Their largest expense, you can see there is their purchase power under their contract they have with TVA. That's 47% of their operating budget. And then on the gas division side, they're projected to start the year with about 27.6 million dollars. Revenue, we're budgeting 15.2 million dollars, and operating expenses of 18,226,000. And we're projecting to reduce cash reserves there next year by 2.3 million dollars, leaving them with 25 million dollars at the end of next year. And their capital includes about 3 million dollars to get started on construction of a new facility with a combination of the gas and the electric into the new energy department. They want to build a new facility down at the electric, where the electric division currently is. So they're projected to spend about 10 million dollars, 12 million dollars on that project over the next two years. So reserves will be used for that. And then the water quality control department is projected to start the year with about 15 and a half million dollars in cash, operating revenue of 25, about 25 and a half million dollars, other revenue, which is loan proceeds, grants, and contributions of another 14 million dollars. So total revenues of about 40 million dollars, 39 and a half million dollars. We're budgeting expenditures there of 51.9 million dollars. And when you add back the cash, non-cash depreciation and amortization, we're projecting next year to reduce cash reserves by about 7 and a half million dollars and end next year with 7,954,000 in cash. And with this fund, we've got a lot of capital in this fund, about 30 million dollars. You can see their general capital, 4,577,000, and then system improvements of about 25 million dollars. So Barry had showed you this slide at our work session, so I wanted to show it to you again, so you can see all the projects that the water department has going on. The water plant expansion, which he's going to be talking to you this evening about borrowing more money for, was a 25 million dollar project. We're hoping to finish that up next fiscal year. So we're budgeting 8.7 million dollars for that. We've got the, the tech pump station and equalization tank coming up. So lots of projects there. I wanted to show that to you to remind you of all the things that they've got going on. And my last slide is kind of a summary of everything that's in this ordinance, and you can see all the different funds. We've got 17 different funds. And the proposed expenditures, it's appropriated in the ordinance for your approval, is 234,68,000. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, go over anything in a little more detail, but I would respectfully request your approval.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Emmel. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Aldridge. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Second by Councilman Walker. We will open the public hearing portion for this agenda item. Anyone who'd like to speak to this? I think Brenda did enough speaking. Thank you. That was nice. We will close the public hearing portion. Yeah, any discussion from the council?
That is impressive.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a lot of hard work. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
It is a team effort. The directors are very much involved in the budget process, and then my staff helps me a great deal too. So.
And it's cool to point out, no, no tax increase. We ever give, we were able to give raises. But that's really good. It's not, we talked about earlier, but it's great jobs, everybody.
Thank you.
It's good.
Yeah, thank you. It's a lot of hard work, and, and you make it understandable, which is what I appreciate the most. So thank you so much for that.
Yes, you do. Appreciate it.
Anything else?
I just think we are concurring a lot of debt that's going to long-term solutions for our city. A lot of us being put back in the infrastructure in our city, and I think that's a very important thing.
Just consider the moment here. This is a quarter of a billion dollar budget here that we have some impressive department heads managing. Thank you for that.
All right. Go ahead and go.
Oh, that's correct. I D S motion carries.
Thank you. 7D. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading. Ordinance O240614, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025 for Kupu Regional Medical Center. Ms. Emmel.
Council members, the hospital is requesting approval of their budget for fiscal year 25. There are no changes in the budget since the work session. I think you have had two work sessions with hospital staff to go over their budget in great detail. So this ordinance has no changes since those work sessions. They are projecting total operating revenue of 450,370,000, or 450,370,000. That's an increase of 12% over where they expect fiscal year 24 revenues to end. They are budgeting operating expense for fiscal year 25 of approximately 425,950,000. Again, that's about a 12% increase over where they expect fiscal year 24 to end. The fiscal year 25 budget projects a positive net income of 7,509,000. The ordinance before you also provides for adoption of their budget for capital projects for fiscal year 25 in the amount of 37,926,000. Their department capital, I think they went through that with you in great detail. One of the largest items on there was replacement of ICU beds that they're going to be doing over the next couple of years. And then their expansion and innovation budget of 14,470, gives you a little more detail there on that slide. The biggest amounts there are the five west and the four west renovations. That makes up the majority of that amount there. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions on this budget, but I would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, seconded by Councilman Walker. Any, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up that portion for this agenda item. Seeing no one to speak, there any discussion from council? Seeing no one to speak, uh, there any discussion from council?
Another budget knocking on the door of half a million dollars. Yeah. I'm excited for the hospital.
They've got some really great projects. Yeah. Expansion that are really going to improve the healthcare system in Cookville. I've been about it as well. Go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, yeah, you can rest now. Yeah. Seven A, consider awarding bid and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for a general contractor to provide pre-construction services for the Cookville Fire Stations. Fire Department Stations two and three, uh, Mr. Mills.
Uh, Mayor and council members, on May twenty-second, we opened bids for a general contractor to provide pre-construction services. With the construction of two fire stations, replacing Fire Station Two, which is located on North Washington Avenue, and Fire Station Three, which is located on Gould Drive. On the screen, you can see we received four bids, um, with WNO construction being the low bidder, meaning specifications at a total bid of seven hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. I would recommend your award, the bid to WNO construction and request your authorization to execute an agreement with them for pre-construction services for Fire Stations Two and Three. On the screen is a rendering of what we like, uh, Fire Stations Two and Three to look like.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Uh, any discussion from the council on this? Okay, go ahead and vote. Do you want to say something? That's not for the hearing.
Sorry.
Oh, oh, well, there is. Yes. No, you're right. But yeah, is there any discussion from the public on this? Yep.
I didn't know you were speaking on this.
No, thank you.
No. Any discussion from council?
But thank you, right?
All right, we'll go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven F, consider approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Tennessee Tech University Foundation for properties located at Church Avenue and South Walnut Street. Tax map fifty-three G, group E, parcels fourteen and sixteen. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, as you said, I'm requesting your approval to enter into a lease agreement with the foundation. Um, there are two properties here. Now they're identified as parcel sixteen on map fifty-three G, group E, and a portion of parcel fourteen. On the same map and group. Um, they're contiguous with parcel fifteen, uh, which is to the left of those properties there that the council previously approved leasing from the university in April. The lease term for these two tracks, as was with the first track, is for twenty years with a payment of a dollar per year for the lease. And as you know, the purpose of this is lease is to allow the city to construct a parking lot for public use. Um, the public purse department has done a rendering. I don't know if I have it on the, available for tonight, but we believe we can do approximately fifty parking spaces in this. So that will greatly help the downtown businesses, um, to have the additional park in there. And I would re- request your approval and your authorization to execute the lease agreement with Tennessee Tech University Foundation.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Baji. Okay. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council?
Just another asset downtown and, and appreciation that no one here from tech, but glad, just another example of good partnership.
Yep.
I like the fact that, you know, we're increasing parking downtown. That's, that's.
Yep. All right, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven G, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an engineering service agreement for various substation projects. Mr. Haney.
Mayor and council members, uh, this is agreement for Tom Barnes consultant to provide engineering services for, uh, various substation projects that we've identified for the coming year. Uh, one of those is to complete our Kane Creek Substation project that's been going on for about a year or so now. Uh, the other one's doing some assessments on some of our substations, such as our South Sub. We have negotiated a not-to-exceed of twenty-five thousand dollars and I request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public? Question from council? Okay, we'll vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven H, consider approval of engineering contract for design of sanitary sewer for the Rebecca Place Bunker Hill Road Annexation area. Mr. Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this is engineering contract would provide the design for sewer of the Rebecca Place Bunker Hill Road Annexation area. This is with CTI engineers who's done a lot of work for us, negotiated fees, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, and it will serve a hundred and forty parcels in this area. I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven I, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for pump and motor repair utilizing the city of Clarksville's. Yep, City of Clarksville approved contract. Mr. Turner.
Previously, we have used, um, John Bouchard for a lot of work down at the water plant. Uh, we have piggybacked off the city of Portland's contract. They, this time, John Bouchard did not submit a proposal to them. So we're asking to piggyback on Clarksville's contract. Uh, this would be using the pricing and early rates that they gave Clarksville. And we have a new contract signed with them and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Gilbert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven J, consider resolution R twenty-four, zero, six, one, four, authorizing and providing for the financing of the construction of a water facility project. Including authorizing the execution of applications, contractual agreements and other necessary documents. And making certain representations, certifications and pledges of certain revenue in connection with such financing. Mr. Turner.
Uh, this resolution would allow us to borrow up to an additional five and a half million dollars for the water treatment plant expansion that's undergoing construction right now. That project is running probably about a little over ten million more than what was estimated when we did their initial loan application for seventeen and a half million. The terms on this is a twenty-year fixed with an interest rate of one point eight five percent and an administration fee of point oh one percent. Uh, this is the resolution and, uh, recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, we'll vote. Seriously.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven K, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O twenty-four, zero, four, zero, six. Request to close, abandon and declare surplus property, a portion of an unde- undeveloped right of way for Fifth Avenue, located off North Willow Avenue. Uh, sorry. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, here's a general location of the request, uh, under consideration. Here is an aerial view, uh, of the, of the location and with the parcel area, uh, of the right of way identified. Mr. Greg Deweese, uh, submitted a request that an undeveloped right of way located off North Willow Avenue be closed, abandoned and declared as surplus property for purchase. Um, as depicted on a submitted survey, uh, prepared by Ron Taylor. The segment of, this segment of undeveloped Fifth Avenue contains approximately point one three seven acres or five thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven point seven two square feet. This right of way is contiguous with the property owned by Greg Deweese and JB Davidson. The procedure for closure and abandonment, abandonment of street right of ways is specified in Title sixteen, chapter four of the Cookville Municipal Code. Uh, the proceed- procedure includes submission of a written request and payment of a fee, submission of a survey. Confirmation that all affected property owners have been contacted and concurred with the closure and abandonment. Review by applicable, applicable city departments, review and approval by the planning commission and consideration by city council. Uh, the purchase of the property is based on a value established by the city manager and appraisal and or recording costs to be paid by the petitioner on any, uh, closure action. Uh, all, um, requirements have been met. All applicable city departments have reviewed the closure and abandonment request and provided no comments or conditions for closure. The petitioner indicated that the request was submitted to allow development of the petitioner's property in a manner that would yield more substantial benefits to the community. Mr. Deweese and Mr. Davidson are the only affected property owners, um, of this request. An analysis of the surrounding property provides a value of two dollars and sixty-seven cents per square foot. This is determined by the land market value as included in the real estate assessment data of the adjoining parcels. The total cost of acquisition is fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Uh, the petitioner does have the option to provide a market appraisal of the property to establish a value. Well, this is the plat that established this right of way. This is the spring part addition plat, uh, the portion of Fifth Avenue, uh, you can see on this. In this area, this was, uh, recorded in Sept- on September thirteenth of nineteen sixteen. So it's a very old plat that established that portion. Well, this, uh, request has been, uh, was recommended, uh, by the planning commission, has recommended by the planning division. Happy to, uh, answer any questions, but I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. We will open up the public hearing portion for this agenda item. Anyone who'd like to speak on seven K? Okay, close the public hearing. Any discussion from council? Okay, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven L, consider, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O twenty-four, zero, four, zero, seven. To rezone property at thirteen thirty-one South Maple Avenue. Tax map zero six six, parcel one zero four point zero zero from RS ten, single family residential to RS seven point five, single family residential. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Here's a general location. Um, here, sorry, that location map was incorrect. Here's a location map of this property. This is located just south of I forty, forty-one parcel off of the interstate. Now here's an aerial view of the track. And here is our existing zoning in this area. Uh, Mr. Donnie Suits submitted this request to rezone from RS ten to RS five. Uh, the subject property consists of approximately twenty-seven point nine four acres. The total area requested for rezoning would contain twenty-eight point one seven acres, including street right of ways. Uh, the property is zone RS ten, single family residential, as are adjacent properties to the north, east and south. Uh, it's bordered by RS fifteen, single family residential to the west. The reason provided for the rezoning request was provided small, was to provide smaller lots for more affordable housing. Uh, the RS ten district is intended to provide a low to moderate, single family residential environment in, in areas where public wastewater is available. The RS seven point five is intended to provide moderate, single family residential environments, uh, residential environment in areas also where public wastewater services are available. Uh, the rezoning, a rezoning request from RS ten to RS five was submitted for the subject property in twenty twenty-two and withdrawn from consideration at the May twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting. Uh, the subject property has approximately six hundred fifty-seven feet of street frontage on South Maple Avenue. Uh, the portion of South Maple located, uh, this portion of South Maple Avenue located south of Neal Street is classified as a minor collector's street. Traffic counts from January twenty twenty-four on South Maple, uh, just east of the property, provided an, uh, average, annual, average daily traffic count of four thousand three hundred and one vehicles per day. Traffic counts from January twenty twenty-four at the southern end of South Maple near Blackwell Road and Highway one eleven, uh, provide an AADT of three thousand one hundred and seventy-two vehicles per day. The twenty seventeen major street plan update provided an acceptable level of service for this segment of South Maple Avenue from I forty, uh, to one eleven. The plan also projected an acceptable level of service for the segment utilizing twenty forty, uh, projections, uh, of traffic. Uh, one thing to note, the twenty twenty, the twenty forty AADT on this segment of South Maple was projected at three thousand six hundred and twenty-five vehicles per day. The twenty twenty-four, uh, traffic counts of four thousand three hundred and one have surpassed our twenty forty projections from the major street plan update in twenty seventeen. Public sewer, water, gas and electric are all present and available for the, uh, for the subject property. Public sewer is located in the western border. Uh, whether the western boundary of the subject property, the water quality control department has provided approval of up to a hundred and forty-five single family residential units on, on this property. Natural gas, public water and electric are all located in the South Maple Avenue right of way. Uh, this subject property has limiting natural factors. The parcel contains a pond and U.S. Fish and Wildlife wetland area identified in the vicinity of the pond. And that consists of about, um, seven point seven one acres. A zero point seven one acres. The eastern boundary of the property includes floodplain areas and limiting topography. The most severe slopes on the eastern portion of the property exceed fifty percent. Uh, limitations on development are considered severe in areas of slope greater than twenty percent. Uh, the planning division estimates that over six acres of this site is limited by natural factors. Based on rough calculations, a parcel of twenty-seven point nine four acres would permit a hundred and twenty-one residential homes at the RS ten classification. A rezoning to RS seven point five would allow up to a hundred and sixty-two homes. Uh, these numbers would be reduced significantly due to limiting natural factors and attrition of street right of way dedication. At a previous rezoning submittal, the developer, developer indicated the request to increase density was to mitigate the loss of developable acreage due to the limiting natural factors. And state, and, and the developer stated the rezoning request was to allow a narrow, narrower lot width with minimal reduction in lot area. The RS ten zone requires a seventy-five foot width at building setback, while the RS seven point five requires sixty feet lot width at building setback. Um, the, uh, the increases in density in, in the opinion of the planning, uh, division would have minimal impacts on the property. Our future land use plan designates this area as best suited for lower density residential. Uh, single family zoning districts have, districts have been interpreted as compliant with this designation in previous rezoning actions. The RS seven point five was developed to provide an alternative in lot size greater than RS five. Uh, in work sessions, uh, the planning division held with the developers, one of the factors referenced for rezoning applications was the linear feet of street frontage required for lower density development. And the cost of street construction, uh, there are currently no areas owned RS seven point five within the city. This would be the first one if, if approved by the council. Uh, one thing to note, the property to the north is the proposed location of the Ben Church. This facility is proposed to be developed in phases with the first phase to accommodate an anticipated occupant load of eight hundred people. The second phase was to add an additional four hundred people for a total, total occupant load of twelve hundred people. Uh, that's what's been communicated to our coach department. The city is requiring the church to complete turning lane improvements on South Maple Avenue as a condition of site plan approval. Uh, depending on the density, uh, of this property, future development could be required to complete improvements to South Maple, including turning lane improvements. Well, here's some aerial views of this property. Uh, you can see there's the pond that's located on the south area and the tree line. Is essentially where the, uh, topography starts to get challenging on the western boundary. Another one looking back toward the pond. That's looking back toward South Maple. So this, uh, um, rezoning was approved, uh, by the planning commission as recommended by the planning division. Uh, recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. We will open the public hearing portion for this agenda item. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Is there any discussion from council?
Um, this is the first one of these that we're doing in RS seven five, and I think that, uh, it'll be an interesting, uh, project to see go through, see how it works out. Um, I don't know. I'd like to see it done and, and see it move forward. I'm, I'm excited for it. Maybe it's a good product for our city. With that, it, how it is done and what it's done, we'll get the chance to review that in the future and make further decisions on how we look at these in the future. Um, I think that it is important for density reasons in our city. Um, you know, as we grow as a city, getting density closer to the center of town is an important thing for us to look at as a council. Uh, and that is probably the biggest driving factor for me being in favor of moving forward with this. Um, South Maple certainly probably need improvements in the future if all the projects go through on that road that you're, uh, that we're considering. Um, you know, I don't think that the residential impact will be near as big as some of the other projects seen. Um, such as everybody going to church on Sunday at the same time. Um, and so I think it's, I think it could be a really good project. It's just yet to be seen since these is, this is something we haven't tried before. Um, as far as affordable housing goes, I know we noted that in the discussion. I don't put as much weight on that because a lot of these projects that we've seen come forward aren't affordable by the people of Cookville standards. Um, and I know that's a, no, that, that is what it is. Building costs are high, land costs are high. I just don't know that that should be the driving reason that we use to make these decisions. I look at it more strictly from a. I look at more strictly from a density perspective in our city. How can we provide space in our city to get, to get more people living here without urban sprawl? And so I think that's the biggest driving force in my decision.
Anybody else? I think it is important to note that while the property, you know, possibly could allow for 162 homes, sewer, water sewer has said, you know, only 145. So that has been, you know, made aware that we're not going to be, you know, really max out the capacity over there, since I know that is an issue at times, but...
The developer has mentioned, Mayor, that, you know, 60 to 80 homes is possible in their preliminary drawings. They've not engineered the project yet. So it's really not touching the cusp of that, but you've got to understand a large portion of it is impacted by limiting factors.
Yeah. Yeah, we did. We formed this zoning to, to help with density, but then still maintain, you know, an area that's residential and family-friendly. And so I think it'll be interesting to see as well how it goes, so.
I do think those supply, increasing supply helps reduce the cost. So I think there will be maybe not as impactful as you would like to say, to call it affordable, but I do think increasing supply should help moving forward. Hopefully, you know, as things trend downward as far as costs and stuff like that in the future, you know, this, you know, may be a great option for affordable housing.
Anybody else? All right, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7M, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance O240408, to rezon property located at State Street and Bobby Avenue, tax map 53P, group A, parcel 026.00 from RS10, single-family residential to CR Regional Commercial. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Here's your general location of the property located off of State Street. Here is a location map of this parcel. Here's an aerial view. Existing zoning, Mr. Tim Bond of Tier 1, on behalf of property owner, Mr. Paul Bobby, submitted a request to rezone the subject, the subject area from RS10, single-family residential, to CR Regional Commercial. The total parcel contains approximately 2.58 acres. The total area requested for rezoning contains approximately 2.08 acres. This property is bordered by CR Regional Commercial to the west and north, and bordered by RS10 to the east and south. The request was submitted to allow for expansion of the Tier 1 site to include parking if that's needed. The current property owner, Mr. Paul Bobby, also owns the property at 475 Bobby Avenue. So it's adjacent to this, to the east. The future land use plan designates this area as best suited for lower-density and mixed-density residential development. The property is adjacent to the Tier 1 development, currently under construction. The petitioner has stated that this rezoning request is to match the existing zoning of the adjacent property and to provide for that additional parking if needed. The petitioner has stated that they would provide any required buffers that would be, would be required by the zoning code to help alleviate any impact to the single-family residential residences located on, located south of the subject property. All those buffers would be required by Section 208, the landscaping and screening requirements of the zoning code. The expressed intent would be to add this portion of the property to the existing Tier 1 property with the remaining 0.5 acres to be added to Mr. Paul Bobby's property. The subject property would need to be combined with the Tier 1, with the existing Tier 1 property, which would help, would provide compliance with the land use plan and eliminate the need for any off-premise issues for a separate parcel. This subject property does not have adequate ingress egress. The property is served by a right-of-way dedicated to the city of Cookville for future street development, platted in 1983 as part of the Freedom Hills development. This right-of-way is approximately 23.7 feet in width at State Street. It narrows to approximately 21.72 feet at the property boundary. The area currently contains a driveway and accessory structure for the property located at 509 Street, State Street. As a condition of rezoning, the Planning Division recommended restricting any access from the subject property from State Street. This is consistent with the intent of sections of the zoning code relative to lots that have frontage on lesser classified streets and higher classified streets. There's a body of water located in the northwest area of the subject property. No other limiting natural factors are present. This area is limited by current access. The rezoning would be consistent with the current coals development to the west. We can see where the coal side is located. It's a consistent zoning line along that southern boundary. Well, here you can see the Tier 1 property is, you know, it's well underway. You can see the, the grass, the undeveloped area, that is the subject area they have So this rezoning request was approved by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Planning Department. That was subject to combining the property with the existing Tier 1s, property on 520 West Jackson Street, and restricting any access from State Street. I recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Motion made by Councilman Gilbert, is there? Second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. This is a public hearing as well. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, close the public hearing portion. Any discussion from council? Okay, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7N, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance O240411, to rezon the Dogwood Park area, tax map 053G, group C, parcels, I don't remember, seven zero zero, right?
Yeah, I've seen them.
There, yeah, great. Parcels 4.00, 6.00, 7.01, 8.00, 10.00, 11.00, 14.00, 15.00, and a portion of 4.01 in tax map 053F, group F, parcel 1.00, did I say those zero zeros too? From CL Local Commercial to CBD Central Business District. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Here's a general location of this rezoning area. Here is a location map depicting the proposed boundaries. Here's an aerial view. Our existing zoning. This area consists of approximately 15.06 acres. The total zoning area, including street right-of-ways, is approximately 17 acres. The properties are all zoned CL Local Commercial and are bordered by the CBD Central Business District to the east, east, south, and west, and is bordered by CN Neighborhood Commercial and CL to the north. This rezoning action was initiated by Planning Division staff to consolidate additional area into the Central Business District. Our future land use plan designates this area as best suited for mixed-use commercial and residential uses and is open space parks rec uses. Both CL and CBD would comply with this designation. The intent of this rezoning is to consolidate the Central Business District to accommodate expansion of the Cookville Performing Arts Center. This rezoning would not affect the uses currently occupying any of the subject properties. The current uses are permitted in both CL and the CBD zones. A portion of the Dogwood Park area is omitted on the northern boundary adjacent to First Street to maintain the existing CN Neighborhood Commercial zoning designation in that area. This rezoning would expand the CBD, providing a broader connection to the CBD zoning from the Courthouse Square area to the west side. You know, here's some aerials of the area. It's looking back to the northeast. It's looking north. It's looking back to the northwest. I would like to let council know I did contact a couple of the property owners that you guys had expressed concerns with that Monday work session. Mr. Carlin had indicated that he didn't have problems with moving forward with the rezoning, and also talked to Ms. Borden, yes. And she, she said that if she had any questions, she'd reach out, but she appreciated us getting in contact with her. But neither really had any objections to moving forward with the rezoning. So this was approved by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Planning Division. Recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Motion made by Councilman Bajeez, second by Councilman Gilbert. This is a public hearing as well. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion. Any discussion from council? All right, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Continuing on with our public hearings, we've got 7O, hold a public hearing and consider, consider resolution R240511, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Cookville, Tennessee for the Putnam County Fairgrounds Annexation Area, located off Tennessee Avenue, further identified as a portion of tax map 55, parcel 108.05. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Here's a general location of this area. This is the entire parcel. You can see the city limits line that runs through the property currently. Here's an aerial view. The city of Cookville received a petition to annex the property identified as a portion of parcel 108.05 on tax map 55 into the Cookville city limits. For the purpose of the annexation request, this area is identified as the Putnam County Fairgrounds Annexation Area. The area consists of approximately 129 acres. The property is located adjacent to the city limits and is entirely within the Cookville urban growth boundary. The resolution R240511 is the final step to incorporate this territory within the boundaries of the city of Cookville by property owner consent and adopt a plan of services for the proposed annexation area. The property owner has indicated that the primary reason for requesting annexation is to bring the fairgrounds entirely into the corporate limits of the city and to obtain access to city sewer services. Approximately 66 acres of the subject parcel is currently located within the current corporate limits, but the annexation request would bring the remainder of the parcel into the city and will allow city-owned public utilities to be expanded across the property. This area is identified in the Cookville 2030 plan as being best suited for lower-density residential and mixed-use commercial and industrial uses. All required notices stipulated by Tennessee Code annotated have been provided for the proposed annexation area. The Planning Commission has reviewed the annexation request and recommended approval of annexation and adoption of a plan of services for the Putnam County Annexation Area. Our plan of services for this area. Police protection, patrolling, radio response to calls, and other routine police services using present personnel and equipment would be provided upon effective date of annexation. Fire protection by present personnel and equipment of the firefighting force within the limitations of available water supply and distances from existing fire stations will be provided upon effective date of annexation. Water service will be provided to the annexation area by the city of Cookville at city rates upon effective date of annexation. Solid waste collection and disposal, the same regular refuse collection service now provided when the city shall be extended to the annexed area within 60 days after effective date of annexation. Streets, emergency maintenance of streets will begin on effective date of annexation. Routine maintenance on the same basis as the present city will begin in the annexed area on effective date of annexation. Reconstruction and reservicing of streets, installation of storm drains facilities, construction of curbs and gutters, and other major improvements would be accomplished under current city policies. Traffic signals, signs, street markings, and other control devices will be installed as needed by appropriate study and traffic standards. Inspection services now provided by the city will begin on effective date of annexation. Planning and zoning jurisdictions of the city will extend to the annexed area on the effective date of annexation. City planning will thereafter encompass the annexed area, and ordinance establishing zoning for the area as CR Regional Commercial shall be adopted following the referendum on annexation. Recreational facilities, residents of the annexed area may use existing rec facilities on the effective date of annexation. Obviously, there's nobody that lives in this area, being it's owned by the public, but if there are, they, if that ever changes in the future, they would be able to utilize our facilities. Electric service is provided by the Upper Cumberland Electric Membership Cooperative. The city of Cookville will pay the cooperative for the provision of street lighting in the annexed area and will request the cooperative provided within one year of the effective date of annexation. And natural gas is provided by the city of Cookville and is available and will be extended based on customer, customer demand and when economically feasible. Well, that is the plan of services for this area. Oh, I recommend approval of the resolution based on the submitted plan of services. Happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, is there? Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. We will open the public hearing portion for this agenda item. Anyone who'd like to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion. Any discussion from council? All right, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7P, hold a here, public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance O240409 to establish zoning in the Putnam County Fairgrounds Annexation Area as CR Regional Commercial. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Section 203.6A of the zoning code stipulates that all territory annexed by the city shall be considered by the Planning Commission and assigned an appropriate zoning classification based on existing land use and long-range plans of the municipality. If a zoning classification, zoning classification is not assigned to a territory at the time of annexation, such territory shall be considered to be RS20, single-family residential until otherwise classified. Due to changes in annexation law, which provides for annexation by owner consent by resolution and ordinance is necessary to establish zoning for this area. The plan of services recommended by the Planning Commission for the Putnam County Fairgrounds area stipulated that this should be zone CR Regional Commercial. Ordinance O2409 would rezone the property from RS20 to CR. Respectfully ask for your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Motion made by Councilman Bajeez, is there? Second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Anyone who'd like to speak to this agenda item for the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion from council? Yeah, yeah, we're running, our batteries are running out here.
Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. We're almost there, we're almost there, guys. Our fingers are going numb. Okay, 7Q, hold a public hearing and consider resolution R240512, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owner and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Cookville, Tennessee for the Nelson North Drive, Nelson North Drive Annexation Area, located in 1975 and 1985 North Drive, further identified as tax map 39, parcel 70. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Here's the general location of this proposed annexation area. Here is the parcel map. An aerial view. This area consists of approximately 5.35 acres for the parcel. A section of North Drive Street right-of-way is necessary to be included, which brings the total annexation area to 5.96 acres. This property is located adjacent to the city limits and entirely within our urban growth boundary. R2, resolution R240511 is the final step to incorporate the territory within the boundaries of the city of Cookville by property owner consent and adopt a plan of services for the annexation area. The property owner indicated the primary reason for requesting annexation is to provide city-owned utilities to the subject property. This area was identified in the Cookville 2030 plan as being best suited for lower-density residential development. All required notices stipulated, stipulated by Tennessee Code have been provided. The Planning Commission has reviewed the annexation request and recommended approval of annexation and adoption of a plan of services. So to spare everybody, I'm just going to highlight the differences in these. So this, this, these plans of services were published. They've been available at several locations in the city for the public to view. Water for this property is provided by the Double Springs Utility District. So that's a difference in this and the, and the Tennessee Avenue property. Sanitary sewer would be provided to the annexation area by the city of Cookville at city rates upon the effective date of annexation. The tap fee and capacity fee for the apartments would need to be paid prior to the parcel connecting to sewer. The city has limited capacity in the Kane Creek Sewer Drainage Basin and would not allow additional units to be built on this parcel until, until more sewer capacity is added to the Kane Creek, Kane Creek Pump Station. So that is one of the bigger differences in this. Planning and zoning jurisdiction would extend at the effective date of annexation. An ordinance establishing zoning for the area as RM8, multifamily residential was recommended by the Planning Commission for the plan of services due to your existing development pattern on the property. And all other city services are consistent with what I went over in the last agenda item. Well, here's an aerial view of this parcel. You can see that's looking north. That's North Drive along the bottom of the screen. You can see there is a existing apartment complex on the subject property. And one of the motivating factors for this request was... on the subject property. And one of the motivating factors for this request was, you know, septic system issues and they wanted to be on city sewer. This resolution and plan of services was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. I recommend your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Don't fall asleep on me now, though. Councilman Baji's got a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Anyone who'd like to speak for the public hearing for this agenda item? Close the public hearing. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven R, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O twenty four zero four ten to establish zoning in the North Nelson Drive Annexation Area as RM eight. Mr. Ward.
As I went over in a previous agenda item, this is necessary due to changes in annexation law and how we have to annex by owner consent by resolution. This ordinance O two four oh four ten would rezone, would establish zoning in the property, rezoning from RS twenty, single-family residential to RM eight multifamily residential. I recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, seconded by Councilman Walker. Where's that been all night? Billy daddling over here. All right. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak on this public hearing agenda item? Okay, we'll go ahead and close it. Go ahead and close the public hearing portion. Is there any discussion from council? We'll vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven S, consider awarding bid and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the Gateway Monument Sign Project. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On Monday of this week, June third, twenty twenty four, at ten AM, the city opened bids for the Gateway Monument Sign Project. There were two bidders for this project, the lowest bidder being HD Homes LLC at a price of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars for construction of these signs. I have some illustrations in here. So, these are our two locations for the signs, one at the one thirty five I forty exit, one at the one thirty six I forty exit, in the locations shown on the map. I wanted to give you guys some perspective on the, the sign locations. So, this is the one that was proposed for one thirty five. This location was brought to us by Tennessee Tech through this process. There have been some revisions to the orientation. It was oriented more south. Upon some further discussions and reviews of this, we have, we oriented that more at an angle at the intersection to try to catch the northbound traffic on I forty if you're exiting eastbound off the interstate and to try to catch folks that are exiting westbound as well. These are some of the requirements that we had to provide to T-Dot as a condition of review and approval, illustrating the clear zones and distances from property lines and existing center lines and rightaways. This is the South Jefferson Avenue location. So, this is located at, you know, just behind the westbound on-ramp at one thirty six and I forty. This is on the, it's an elevated area. It's on a hill right behind Cracker Barrel, right? There's some pine trees in that area that would be removed as a part of this project for that location and some minimal grading required there. Again, the intent of this was to try to capture all northbound traffic off of Jefferson, folks exiting the interstate and both directions and traveling northbound. So, this is the final design of what was submitted to, to T-Dot. Of course, we've had some changes in our logo and fonts and things since then. There's, you know, we'd still have the opportunity to approve shop drawings and everything for any of the work to be done on the limestone panels. There's, this is an illustration that was put together that showed our new logo with that font. You know, I'm not sure if that's the direction the city would want to go, if you like the more traditional font that was on the, the previous sign. This is our landscaping plan. Forgive the three stars in the so there. That was developed prior to, you know, the, the change in the logo. This is just part of what's being proposed with crepe myrtles, grasses and things like that around the locations, trying to minimize maintenance required for this, but it will require some maintenance to keep it looking good. So, those are my signs. I know that, I know that council had some questions about this. I mean, I'm happy to discuss that with you guys. We've taken it to this point. We have the bids. So, the action before you do not would be to approve the bids and authorize the city manager to execute the contract for construction.
Thank you.
I'm happy to discuss this with you. I recommend, I recommend approval as we present it.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion made by Councilman Baji is there? Second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
Can we go back in the slide of orientation of the Willow in Cooks? I do have some concerns. I think this could be a great project for Cookeville. You know, we brought this up several years ago. I do think a gateway signage intended for I forty was really intended to grab the attention of I forty goers, whether they were passing through Cookeville or exiting in Cookeville. I don't know that this sign does that. And, you know, if we have some time on the, the bid to review this for another week, talk about orientation just a little bit further, I would appreciate that. I don't know what our big contract allows. Is there any information?
I don't know that we had to award the bids tonight. We just, it's taken so long for us to get to this point. We were just, you know, we had everything ready and we thought we'd try to move the, move on as, as, as we had it prepared to present to council. I would recommend, you know, this location was brought to us by Tech, right? So, I would recommend that we may need to try to have some type of work session with them to discuss that, if this is the location council has concerns with. But that, that, this, this is the location that they brought to us that initiated this whole project, right? This was where they proposed to install a sign that started this whole, this whole project with the city and Tech. And, you know, as you, as council's aware, this is a, a project where that funds are being split fifty fifty with Tennessee Tech to design, build the, the signs. But that may be worthwhile to try to sit down with them if you guys want to do that.
I, I think it's worthwhile. I mean, if we just got, we'll have another council meeting in a couple of weeks to finish the budget. So, I know this process has been going on, I believe, since?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty, yeah, end of twenty-two. So, I, I don't know that another week would hurt anything if it doesn't affect the bid process, if the rest of the council's okay with that. Maybe just to have a small discussion, look at some more visuals and, and just discuss that a little bit further.
Mr. Raiders, there won't be any problem with that.
Do we need to amend it or?
No.
Motion to postpone.
Especially.
Well, I'll give her best chance of discuss.
Okay.
I, I, yeah, I do feel like we have gotten this far and we've had, had to work with T-Dot. And we know that we are very gracious for the work that we get to do with them, but speed is not one of their fortes. And so, if, you know, if a week would allow us to have a little bit of discussion, just to see if there are any other options, which I, you know, I do apologize, this has been on the table for a while and we just now are kind of wrapping our heads around it. I'd like to see that happen, but at the same time, if it, if it is going to seriously delay and we have to start all the way back over, you know, we've gotten this far and I would hope that we could keep the momentum going and find a solution, if that's possible.
Miles?
If I could. I, I think we probably could postpone it and the possibility of turning the signs on. If you're talking about another location, then we might as well start over on this project because this took us two years just to get this location approved. So, all you're talking about is trying to turn it, then, you know, file this postpone and see if we can't get T-Dot to agree to allow us to do that. If you're talking about a new location, then you're gonna have to start over. And do you not just, do you agree?
I can get that information. I will reach out to the persons with T-Dot that I've went through the approval process with and I can try to get that back to you before, you know, before two weeks.
Yeah, I, I certainly want to see the project move forward. I think the Jefferson location is a great spot. I think it's going to enhance the entryway into Cookeville and, and be something everybody can appreciate, whether you live here or you're just visiting. I just think we, if we can have just a little more discussion, there's some maybe complicated questions around this that we can get all of our answers to. I don't know that.
Was there a way to do both? I mean, how, when, when did this start? I mean, it's how long?
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two. Tech brought this to us in twenty twenty-two and that's when we started the process, when we started, you know, pursuing the licenses.
Award with a, with a, with a, with a request to explore the, those things to keep the momentum. I mean, shop run processes take a long time. Going to contract takes time. I mean, every, every day you add compounds three. That is usually the, kind of the rule of thumb in the contracting world. So, I, you know, what it feels like, feels like a week or two of review to us could, could potentially add, you know, three times that.
So.
This doesn't bother me as much. I think Tech does a really good job at promoting Cookeville being where we're at. I think, I think we may pass this on and look at maybe adding one down on Tennessee Avenue. Yeah.
If we do that, that would be a whole separate item that we would need to address, yeah, and not paint.
We're familiar with the process now, though.
If we want to get into that further discussion, I think, like, my biggest concern is this sign is directed to capture I forty eastbound traffic coming into Cookeville from the west.
Having seen an aerial view of this, I actually think they're trying to catch them both. I mean, they've done the best they can to catch everybody getting off or going west and then also the people go, coming in from Nashville and the prevailing majority of which are going to head north. And so, you.
So, did Tennessee Tech do the analysis on this to determine?
They brought us the locate.
This is going to be, so they probably dove into this pretty deep and probably determined this is the best location, the best angle, that kind of thing. I would imagine they did some kind of in-depth, deep dive analysis on this, right?
I can't speak for them, Holly. They, because of Baji, they brought us a proposal at this location. They already had a sign cited on it. They had the architectural conceptuals. You know, that was brought to council when you guys initially approved moving forward with this type of project. So, you know, they, they looked at this and this was their desired location in this project and we added the Jefferson location, city staff did.
I don't have a problem delaying i- if there's no penalty to doing that, you know, if it doesn't cost us a bit of time, the bid and all that stuff. You know, it, it's worth, I think the amount of money that we're investing in this, it's probably worth making sure that we dotted our i's and cross our t's.
So, from what I'm hearing is that we would like to make a motion to postpone?
Well, or let's just, let's just identify the, or revisit the, the request here. We're being asked to authorize him to go do this, but can we not include in that a remit for him to explore those options and then if, and if they've all been exhausted?
If it comes back.
Right. Then he, then we.
We could bring it back to.
Right. And if, and if not, it.
He moves forward.
He moves forward.
If you wanted to place some.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Approve that and then change it.
Have the discussion and then have the discussion if we need to change the spec or if we need to.
Yes. Yeah, I'll go and make the motion to postpone this to the next council meeting. Seems like we do have some discussion on it. I don't think it's gonna change the bid. So, just until the next council, we'll do the schedule at council meeting.
That's fine. You know, we debated on whether or not we want to go ahead and put it on or not. We were, we spent so much time on this. I know John's spending a lot of time. We thought you guys had reviewed this and understood where everything was going to go. So, that's why we went ahead and put it on here. Well, I will say again, I don't think, I think T-Dot will allow us to turn this on. If we're talking about, because we've moved this around, that we consult, in consultation with Tech about finding the best location at this site. If you're talking about moving it to another site, then we will have to go all the way through the process again. We'll have to avoid the bids we've had because it will completely change then. So, just keep that in mind. If all we're talking about is what, is trying to get with T-Dot and confirm that we can turn this on, then file this postpone and come back in two weeks. If you're talking about trying to find another location, then what you need to do is, is just reject the bids and start over because we can't, you know, this doesn't require going back and we can't ask a, a general contractor to wait six months to a year on a bid. I don't think you can to, I don't know, put a new project.
So, just to clarify, Councilman Walker, you would just, you do not want to do that? You just want to postpone to see if there's not some changing the direction?
I.
Or having a discussion?
At that discussion around this side.
I would like to certainly understand what you, you know, we talked about elevating. I mean, what is it exactly that the council's looking for here? I'd like to understand, you know, that, so we can.
I think there's several variables that would just be better discussed in a meeting dedicated to the sign so that we don't drag it too long. I mean, at most, we're gonna lose two weeks here. A motion to postpone is not take it off indefinitely. It is put it on the agenda for the next.
So, we've got a motion to postpone, yes.
To the next thing.
Do we have a second for that motion to postpone?
Second.
Second from Councilman Baji.
Can I ask one more thing? Well, you got a second. I think John needs, I think John needs directions, specific directions, what he's supposed to be doing over the next two weeks. Are you wanting a meeting here to set up a meeting in a week with Tech or do you want to start to get T-Dot here? What are we trying to accomplish during the two months, the two weeks we're, which we're willing, man, more than willing, what are you directed today? Well, dude, we just need to know what it is.
The sign, the sign direction, elevation, excellent point. You know, if we want, you know, will elevation help us capture more traffic or add visibility for that eastbound traffic that we'd like to capture? Those are types of things I think would be beneficial.
So, direction change, elevation.
John, you can contact T-Dot and see if those are things we can do.
And discuss with Tech.
Confirm that. And then if we can, then we'll, you guys good with us trying to set something up with Dr. Oldham and Tech, see if they're good with that and then.
Yeah, definitely include them on the.
But then I think we got a clear path forward here.
So, council wants it oriented more south.
No, Doc, I, we need to discuss those options and then you have marching orders.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna motion in a second. We've had some discussion about it. So, now we're gonna vote on the item as amended.
You're gonna vote, you're voting on whether.
You gotta get this right. Yeah, okay, we have motion second to postpone. Yes. We've had discussion and then it goes the next way. Okay. All right. So, we've had discussion. Everyone comfortable with voting? Okay, we're voting to postpone this agenda item to the next meeting in two weeks.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Seven T, consider authorizing the city manager to execute purchase option agreement for two properties on North Washington Avenue. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you are aware, for the fast and beaming muss, tech ring to identify property suitable for the relocation of Fire Station Two, which is located on North Washington Avenue. Fire Station Two, along with Fire Station Three, which is on Gould Drive, are both approximately fifty years in age and definitely need to be replaced. Each of our stations is strategically located to provide the best coverage for the corporate limits. Any relocation needs to be in close proximity to the existing stations to maintain or improve coverage. Two properties located on North Washington Avenue have been identified as a potential location for the new construction of Station Two. Benton Young, our chief, has been in contact with the owners of these properties and they've agreed to a purchase option agreement. The properties are located eighteen oh six to eighteen sixteen, North Washington Avenue, which is approximately one block north of the existing station. You can see it's at the very bottom of the photo on the screen. The parcels are identified as Parcels thirty-one and thirty-one oh two on map forty F group H. Parcel thirty-one is owned by the Pearl Wilmouth Testamentary Trust. And Parcel thirty-one oh two is owned by Larry K. and Dana Wilmouth. Combined, the two parcels consist of approximately one point two acres. They're single-family dwellings located on both of these parcels, which will have to be removed for the construction of the new station. The purchase agreement specified total purchase price. So, combined, the two parcels would be purchased for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The option would expire on August thirty-third, which allows us time to do our due diligence, which would include some sole drillings and also to do the title search. It calls for earnest money of five thousand dollars per parcels to, per parcel to be paid with the options and that would be deducted from the final selling price. So, we will also have our engineers confirm that the proposed station will fit on this property. We think it will. It may require some setback modifications, but we believe it will fit. But that's another thing that we will be looking at. And I'm requesting your approval for me to execute first option agreements for these properties.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, seconded by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Let's take a vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. We have made it to the end. Seven U, consider approval of contract to purchase property and authorize the city manager to purchase property owned by John B. Wiggins. And wife Carrie Wiggins identified as a portion of map zero four zero G, group C, parcel one point zero six, located on West Seventeenth Street. Mr. Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this property is needed for the construction of the tech wet weather storage facility that we've discussed for quite a while. We've worked on this. The city attorney finally got some negotiations that I wasn't able to get done and got it agreed to as a purchase price of one point one five million dollars. And I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion made by Council, Vice Mayor Eldridge, seconded by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the agenda portion of this meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the council on non-agenda items? Uh, council, anything? No, we're done. Shut up. I mean, yeah, so, thank you all, everyone for, what? No, were you serious? Okay.
It's very serious.
Huh?
Very serious.
Okay.
I'd like to announce we're going to cancel our July fourth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, do, announce that.
Flex with the July fourth celebration. So we will, if it's all with the council, we'll cancel our July fourth meeting.
Okay.
And this being the, you know, it's rare that we get to have a council meeting calling on the same day as the day anniversary. And this being the eighty year anniversary, you know, just, I want to say thank you to those surviving members of that.
One other neat thing for Cookeville, I think there's Tennessee Tech grad up in space right now.
That's right.
That we all should be excited about and be praying for. Yeah.
Anything else? You're sure you don't want to hang out longer? We are, we are adjourned.